Any discussion? I just have one comment, and it could be that people are saying rotaries, not roundabouts. It's getting transcribed as rotaries. And I just, this is for Julia's benefit that if they're, if the people say roundabouts, I mean, they're roundabouts, so technically, that's what they are, you know?
Yeah. Rotaries are a different thing, by definition.
But, so, I can't remember if people, you know, said, uh, rotaries or roundabouts.
People were using rotary.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure it came up in the, in the soundtrack.
We need one of those, like, it says rotary in a circle and a line through it, because that's really not where we're at, but, anyway. Any other discussion? There wasn't much discussion.
Very detailed.
Okay, all in favor of adopting these excellent minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been adopted. So, we've got a bunch of announcements, or a few announcements, those were last times. The first one is about the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Planning and Zoning Forum, and the planning office has sent out requests to see who's interested in going. We have, what, two, two spots that the town will cover? Is that right?
Yes.
And how many people have expressed interest in going?
It appears as if there's...
Four.
Four.
Four?
Including you. Joseph, she's interested?
I don't see it.
Five.
I guess the four of us that are here, right?
Well...
No.
Well, there's five, so.
If...
One of the people who's not here expressed interest.
If I had to bow out, I would. So, just say those words, and I will. I have to bow out.
Gary.
Okay, I'm out.
You have to bow out.
So, there's three, three people?
No, there's four then.
There's four, okay.
Are we a VLCT member? What price do we go under here?
The town is.
So, that is, these three people here, plus Liz?
Yes.
Okay. So, can we, is that something that we can do, or will there have to be a lottery or something?
Has there been some other, one that nobody went to, and we have leftover money, so to speak?
Sure.
It's an annual allocation, isn't it? I mean, don't you just budget an annual amount for trainings or whatever?
Yeah.
And so, it's against that that it goes, or has an arbitrary decision been made that for this particular forum, that two will be allowed to go?
There's no training allowed for the planning commission.
Is, I mean, is DRB members gonna go?
Not that I'm aware of, no. And I don't think it...
What's your recor, if the, if the financial aspect of it was not an issue, what would your recommendation be? Would you recommend that we attend it, or not?
I think it could be interesting. I think it's sort of a personal choice as to, you know...
Do you have any experience with those?
...your background or your experience.
Yeah.
So, if you wanted to gain more, then this could be worthwhile. I think there could be other training opportunities that, that might yield more information.
Do you, or anyone here, have any other previous experience with those VLCT seminars?
Yes.
Were you satisfied?
Are you guys going? Are you guys going? Yeah.
Yes. You know, they vary in terms of quality. I've been to some good ones, and, you know, it depends a little bit on the topic, and then who's presenting. So, sometimes they've been rewarding, and sometimes they've been a little disappointing, but...
Like, any sort of, yeah, right?
I mean, you know, runs a gamut.
I've been to state planning meetings, they're, they're usually pretty good. I went to one of those, the planners do.
I've been to a couple of the, of the VIT ones in the evenings, and those were both, maybe I've been to three, I guess.
Right.
And they were all pretty good.
Right.
Shorter time span, though. I mean, these are very interesting topics, and very current, so... So, can we just leave it that four, four people have...
Wednesday, the number.
Expressed interest.
Expressed interest, and you guys will sort it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. The AARP Livable Communities Grant update?
I wanted to provide an update, so, the last meeting, and probably the newspaper, you've seen that the town of Brattleboro was one of two communities in the state to receive funding for the Livable Communities Grant. It's going to bring Dan Burden, who is kind of a nationally-recognized consultant on bike and pedestrian, um, mobility issues. I believe he may have at one time worked with the Florida Department of Transportation, so he's kind of a good bridge between the government and the public.
Is he the guy that was in Keene for...
No, that was Mark Fenton.
Oh, okay.
Similar field.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're going to be holding a day-long workshop, it's gonna be from nine to 2:30 on November 1st, and we're gonna be doing a walk audit of Canal Street. And so, kind of the morning's gonna be an audit, and the afternoon is gonna be a stakeholder session. And so, we are inviting planning commission members to participate, and space is limited, so I'll send you a more formal announcement, but it'd be great for planning commissioners to be there. And right now, it's gonna be held at the hospital. And then, there's gonna be an evening presentation from 6:30 to probably 8:30, where Dan will give an overview of the workshop, and he'll also touch on just the general themes of complete streets and improving biking and walking.
So, that was, what, 6:30 to 8:30?
Yeah.
That same night?
Yes.
No, that same day, November 1st?
Yes.
Okay. And is that also at BMH?
That's gonna be at the Memorial Graduate.
Yeah.
Okay, so, this is for, for people in our audience, can you give just a little, a little bit of a capsule of what this came out of, or...
Well, AARP was, in Vermont, were big sponsors of the complete street legislation that Molly Burke and others from the legislature were instrumental in helping pass for Vermont. So, this is kind of an extension of their work with complete streets and creating livable communities where people can walk and get around easily. So, they were able to work with the livable, or with Dan Burden's organization, to bring him to Vermont. So, it was a competitive grant application that we submitted over the summer.
Great.
So, as part of it, so, in addition to the workshop, we will, the town will receive some funding to implement one or more of the recommendations that come out of it. So, the funding's limited, but it's...
And does this dovetail, it does, I think, dovetail with the transportation chapter of the town plan?
Absolutely, that, that we'll be discussing tonight.
Very much.
We talk a lot about complete streets, and, and through all of the outreach with the town plan, we heard a lot about improving biking and walking.
Is it just Canal Street, or is it...
Yeah, we picked Canal Street as the site to do the audit.
But it's, the plan will be implemented on streets other than just Canal Street, right?
The way the grant program is designed is that it includes $3,000 towards implementation, which is not a large amount of money. So, we are expecting actually to focus on that stretch of street.
I see. As Putney Road has sort of already got its attention.
Well, and all the problems there are a little more vexed, and so, one of the things that helped us select this stretch of Canal Street was that there are multiple schools, and a hospital, and then a wide demographic of people on both sides of Canal Street. And then, Canal Street partially because of the way it works with the traffic acts as a barrier to cross Canal Street pedestrian and biking activity.
What are the ends of that section you're referring to?
So, we're looking at the hospital, probably Maple Street as the...
Bottom end.
Bottom.
So, from, so from the intersection on up to...
Fairground.
Fairground.
Fairground, yeah, right.
And so, if we, when we think about, you know, outside of downtown, in town, that has, has a very large number of pedestrians or potential pedestrians, between Oak Grove, the Career Center, the middle school, the high school, and the hospital, and the nursing homes, and the doctors' offices, and sort of ancillary services on both sides of Canal Street. So, I actually feel that it's, it's that that helped us select that site, I guess.
Pretty dense area, pretty, pretty good place to...
With some level of engagement.
Try some things.
There's been some momentum.
Momentum that we also want to build on.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other questions about that? So, that would be two planning opportunities, two days in a row.
Yes.
Yes.
One local and one...
Yeah.
One you could almost walk to.
Yeah.
Will those be covered?
That workshop?
Yeah.
It's, it's free.
Planners, yeah.
Yeah.
I probably wouldn't go to Wednesday if I went to Tuesday.
So, that'd be something to keep in mind, when the...
We'll reach out.
When the nails go out.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
We don't have any...
I have a couple of other announcements, from things that we, one is that, just a reminder that we have our meeting with the DRB.
Yes, we do.
On the 7th of November.
Mm-hmm.
And what time would that be?
Their normal time for meeting is 7:00 PM, I understand.
Seven, okay. So, just to refresh everyone's memory, or if you haven't heard about it, we're gonna have what we, what we falsely term an annual meeting with the DRB. We haven't had it except for every couple of years, but...
That's semi-annually.
Thank you.
Does that be here?
I'd rather say annually.
Or sporadic.
Be wrong, you know?
It's gonna be in this room, 'cause both the DRB and planning commission meet in this room. And it's a regular, they're regularly, well, it's their al...
Yes, it is.
It's their al...
It's their alternate.
It's their alternate.
It's their alternate date, right?
Date, yeah.
They'll be taped.
We've not, I haven't checked, I'll check with Cor. We should assign sometime at the next October agenda to, for this, for the planning commission to identify any issues that we want to discuss with the DRB. The DRB has been doing some of that work already.
Okay. And so, we talked about the focus of it, not solely, but the focus of it to be subdivision regs, right? That's sort of gonna be the...
Right.
What we're, what we're gonna mostly talk about.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that, in the spirit of the first meeting, where we identified lots of small things, that if they were just changed, simple things, that it would make life easier for everybody, I, we're not finding lots of those to do this time around.
Yeah.
I'm worried about, the real, the real purpose of these changes is that they don't necessarily involve a great deal of detailed discussion, and any changes to the subdivision regulations or the zoning ordinance still requires the public hearings and all that kind of stuff, so...
Sure.
We just need to be careful of what we're biting off here.
But, we were sort of, I think, thinking about it as if one of the goals of the, the town plan is to, gonna be to rewrite the zoning ordinance.
We should, we should take this opportunity to capture their input.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how I've been thinking about it, I guess.
Of course, we'll get that from these two and James on a regular basis, right?
Yes.
Wouldn't know, well, really enjoy, yeah.
I'm only kidding.
Are you referring back to, back when that previous meeting occurred, and something came out of that, that talked about low-hanging fruit?
Right.
Is that the, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I prefer not to get into the vegetation discussion, but, um...
No, but that was, that was how it was labeled, the essence of what they were trying to do, to pick off the easy ones.
Yeah, right.
Low roosting chickens, I think, is what it was.
You're right, that's it.
So, just, yeah, all I'm saying is, at some point, it crosses a line, or it becomes much more conceptual, or much more of a bigger policy decision. So, I mean, literally, the first time around, we picked up things that were out of date because there'd been some change in procedure somewhere else, or there are obvious, almost editorial-level errors that we were identifying and changing.
Right, right. But, but you're not saying that we have a lot of those?
No, I think we got most of them the first time, actually.
Okay. Okay. And then, the last thing that I have is, there's a meeting about transparency in, that's sponsored by the VLCT.
It's the Secretary of State, it's transparent.
Secretary of State.
The transparent Secretary of State team.
Yeah, that, I got an invitation too, I don't know if everybody did, but, I don't know. And I assume it's worn.
If, if the Secretary of State has managed to do that properly, then, that's also, I can't remember what the other meeting is, but there's a conflict with another meeting on that night as well.
Oh, is there? Well, that, so that meeting is at...
Yes, there's an act two, there's the public comment on the Act 250 process on the same night.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but I think that the transparency meeting is earlier.
It's from six to eight.
There's another laugh.
Oh, six to eight, okay.
Yeah.
There's an overlap there.
On the 27th of October.
Right.
Thursday.
That's right.
Here, in the municipal building.
Which means that, I don't know where the Act 250 meeting is.
High school.
It's a high school.
Oh, really?
I think it's at the high school.
Wow.
Or maybe the Career Center.
Huh, okay.
Is that Act 2, Act 250, or is that on the state energy plan?
No.
Act 250.
It's actually, it's all on all-state permitting through the District Environmental Commission, so not just Act 250 wastewater and water permitting too.
Right.
Okay, so, there's an Act 250 or state permitting meeting?
State pending.
On the same night. So, if you're interested in transparency and state permitting, you're kinda out of luck. Yeah, yeah, okay. That's all my announcements, anybody got any?
Got a question. There's graffiti all over town, looks terrible. What can we do about this? I don't know if it's the planning commission's job, but it needs to be, somebody needs to address it, it's terrible.
Apart from them possibly being the perpetrators, I don't know.
I mean, I've heard Public Works has a pressure washer or something, or spray remover. I mean, this is like a, probably isn't the job of the planning commission, but as members of the community, you know, some things...
Is this like more than usual?
It's everywhere. I mean, it's just getting worse.
It seems to be that there's a, something of an outburst.
Uh-huh.
It's a topic of discussion, a month the department has, and, you know, staff and select board.
Talking isn't gonna do anything.
Well, let me finish. So, already twice now, the sort of textured pavement that is at the end of the Wettstone Pathway, between the Wettstone Pathway and Flat Street, has been repainted twice.
Yeah.
To cover the graffiti, and the Public Works has been working on, when they're alerted to the existence of the graffiti, using the machine, if it's gonna work. Sometimes I think there's questions about whether it comes off the surface that it's on with the machine they have, but people are aware of it and addressing it pretty vigorously. But, I, it keeps on happening as well, so...
Yeah.
You know, my understanding is the police are pursuing it, so, everybody that needs to be involved, as far as I can tell from where I sit, is involved. It's not something that the planning commission does address directly. We have an ordinance about graffiti and a simple landing for the police.
There's an ordinance about graffiti?
Sure. What's the penalty, is it strong enough? I mean, is that the problem? There's not enough to turn, or they're just...
I don't know the details. And DPW does have the equipment and is charged with removing graffiti, certainly on public property, and where it occurs on private property, I'm sure, you know, there's arrangements they've made.
Okay, thank you. I guess that was under other business, any other, other business? Well, let's go right into, since we have no public here to comment, there won't be that. The next item is town plan schedule update. Assume everybody got one in their packet. This is the, this is how the, how we see the, the rest of the schedule going, with the idea that, that the final draft will be ready by the end of January, which is a, two, three months later than what we were thinking.
Yeah.
And which probably, well, undoubtedly pushes it into the next select board, as far as approval and oversight and approval of it, which is, you know, a little regrettable, but given the circumstances that we've been going through in the last couple of months, kind of, can't help it. So, here we are.
The, the other piece of information there is that the select board has announced that they're gonna start working on the town budget in November, so to some extent, the schedule coincides with their deliberations on the budget a little bit better, so that was always gonna be a conflict.
Yeah, yeah.
And...
We would've either had to get it to them in, like, July, or, or it had slipped till this time anyway, so...
Right, so, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's, I guess, pretty, pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions or comments on the schedule as proposed? You can see, we have, well, two for, five, six, really, six meetings before final draft. Am I right about that? Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, of course, we will have our public hearing in February, so, with warning and everything, that will push the, the select board public hearing probably, realistically, to April, would you say? I guess that's, that's right, thirty-day...
It's thirty-day warnings, so...
Yeah, and they have to have two?
They have to have two, but they don't have to be, you know, thirty days apart. You could warn one for one week, the other one could be the next night.
They could be two weeks apart.
You know, the two weeks apart, they could be a week apart.
So, is the thirty-day notice, it's different, usually it's two weeks, right?
That's for development review. Town plan has always been thirty.
Yeah.
And do we need, I thought we needed two public hearings also? No? Just one for planning commission?
Yeah, it might behoove us to have more than one.
I think, I think, I think once we see the final draft, it's gonna be clear, but I, I would reasonably expect that we would schedule two.
Yeah.
Okay, so, maybe I should, I'll read this, so that people that are watching can, can hear what the schedule is, quickly. Tonight, we're talking about transportation and land use, and the transportation is the, the, the final draft of the transportation chapter. On the 24th, in two weeks, that is, we will be talking about the, well, it'll be the final draft of the energy chapter, and then, discussion of the housing chapter.
Yes.
November 14th, excuse me, the final draft of municipal services, and the final draft of the land use chapter. On the 28th, the final draft, I'm sorry, the, a discussion of the economic development chapter and municipal services, so that wasn't the final draft, or, okay, I'm sorry, the 14th is a preliminary discussion of municipal services, and then, the 28th is the final draft of municipal services. December 12th, and we only have one meeting in December, December 12th is the second discussion of housing. Then, January 9th is the final draft of economic development and the final draft of the housing chapter. And then, the total final draft of the whole plan is January 23rd.
Right.
And our schedule is to have the public hearing for the town plan on the 27th of So, the, the chapter drafts that have been revised and are in final form are the agriculture, natural resources, education, arts, and historic and scenic resources. And that's it. So, if anybody was watching, or anybody here has any questions about that, please contact the planning department, and everybody is welcome to come to our meetings. We will be discussing these topics, and we've had really good participation to date, and would like to, now that we're, we're kind of in the home stretch, we'd like to continue to have that kind of participation, so, thank you. Any questions?
Comments?
So, the next item is final discussion of the transportation chapter. This is the chapter that we were scheduled a couple of times ago to talk about, and we have, have we, this is probably at least the third time that we've talked about transportation in the...
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about it back in the spring.
Yeah, yeah. We had some good input from people in the community, so this is the final draft, and I think it's really good, but I, do people have any questions or comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
I don't see in the action steps, a lot of places for town people to have input, and one of the things we talked about, when we talked about, actually, under Policy Three, promoting bicycle and pedestrian mobility, the first two action items were things that we talked about having kind of inventories done, and while I can appreciate that the town departments need to look at sidewalks, people in the town also came to many of these meetings and wanted to be involved in that process, and I don't, you have, you kind of have put in parentheses after each of these, who's kind of responsible for that, and I guess I would just like to see that there's room there for citizen participation, and also in the one with bike routes around town, we, we had talked about having people kind of, people who are the bike commuters, ride those routes and come and give input to us or to a committee, that they be part of that kind of survey of the routes and, and things like that. And there's people who I know have made recommendations for sidewalks, like especially to, say, Morningside, for instance, that, where there's no sidewalks along 142, and there's people, there are members of the community who have ideas about things, and I, and I just don't see the, a space there where, and we talked about this at a lot of the other meetings, when we talked about transportation.
I think, I think for me, it was implied, I mean, if the planning services department's doing a project to come up with a shared route, I guess for me, it was just a given, so...
Yeah.
I can figure out a way to capture that.
Yeah, I just thought it, it could be, and, community members, or, I mean, I don't know, I just wanna be sure that there's opening there, that later somebody says, well, it doesn't say community people can participate, so we can't do that, you know, I just don't wanna back us in a hole. But I do overall like the way it's been put into goals, and again, the new format... But I do overall like the way it's been put into goals, and again, the, the new format really makes it very clear, and...
I have a question. On, um, policy four, the Greyhound, is that currently stopping at the Shell station in...
My understanding is that it's using the Shell gas station on Canal Street.
And the Sanoco on Putney Road, I just saw it stop there the other day.
Really?
Still?
Really?
I was surprised, unless he was getting gas there, but I saw a Greyhound bus there just a couple of days ago.
They don't sell diesel, so...
No, right, that's what, that's my point, so...
My understanding was that it had already shifted.
It had, they, I've, I've seen him picking up passengers at Fleming's on Canal Street, but yet, uh, uh, two days ago, I saw a Greyhound bus in that Sanoco on Putney Road. I don't know if maybe they were dropping somebody there, or what, but...
The one that's in the middle of, the whole, middle of Putney Road?
The one that was sandry.
Right, it's still sandry.
Yeah.
I don't know about that, but the D O B issued a permit to Fleming Oil, who operates the Shell on Canal Street. And that's where we understand the bus stop for Greyhound is currently.
Yeah. Well, as a, I, and I'm not sure what the stipulations are, but it would be nice if Greyhound is a method of, of tourism. And downtown is supposedly where the tourists are going, they're coming to Brattleboro, that's where they're going. Seems like it would be, especially if the stop were closer to the train, it seems like it would be wise to have a stop downtown, or is that not reasonable?
It is reasonable, and it has been expressed to the regional management of the Greyhound bus line more than once. And they were encouraged and invited to utilize the transportation center when they were looking for alternate sites. After the Sanoco on Putney Road was likely to be no longer available to them. And in the end, um, they wanted to be able to guarantee twenty-four, uh, seven days a week ticket sales.
Oh.
And, um, that's how they settled on the ga- gas station on Canal Street. Um, I had encouraged them to approach Duddy's and Gujice's and other businesses, but there are really no twenty-four, seven businesses downtown. So, um, that was a requirement of theirs, and they definitely don't want to make a real estate commitment that involves like a bus station or an office or anything like that.
Yeah.
Because their national strategy is to, is to move away from that and to literally use curbside stops. So...
The good thing is they're closer, I mean...
They are closer, right.
They're a lot.
And they're on the B-line.
Yeah, I mean...
They don't actually stop there, but you could probably, that could probably be changed to con- con- um...
Yeah.
Coincide with the, when the bus comes in.
Well, the B-line will pick you up if you flag it down, so, um, it's not ideal. I was the one that made the pitch for the transportation center and spoke with the representative.
You can't, there, there's no option for a kiosk, or, I mean, there's a lot of people who use the internet, it seems like an online...
That's the major way they sell tickets now, so...
Yeah.
No, I mean, you know, they've made the choice, we found out after the fact, effectively, that they'd chosen the Canal Street side.
Is there, um, I've probably heard this twenty times, but is there any more in the plans down at the train station? A bus turnaround there, or is that...
Um, yes.
Well, the, the turnaround remains, it's a requirement, it's basically a turnaround that will, I guess, bring the B-line or some sort of shuttle for passengers getting off the train and getting up to the transportation center. So it's...
Not for a tour bus, not that size, or...
Well, I don't know the radius, the turning radius, but...
I doubt, I doubt they'd be comfortable operating the bus in that turnaround, a, a Greyhound-sized bus in that turnaround.
Yeah.
They're pretty unwieldy.
Yeah. When they bring people to town and like, you know, I just, I can't think of this, how this works, but when they bring people to town, tourists, do they like stop someplace downtown and unload people and then go and come back?
Well, I, you know, also, when I had the discussion with the Greyhound representative, their, this tourism is highly seasonal and specific. And it's not really, I mean, it's an important, it's, it's an important part of their business and they, that's what they're attempting to service in the tourist season. And it's predominantly summer and into fall. The rest of the year, the business is not associated with tourism nearly as strongly. And, um, you know, it's their more traditional Greyhound bus clientele that they're servicing.
Where, where's everything at with the signage? Bab got a grant to do professional services for the signage for downtown, or...
Yes, that's my understanding. We, so what, are you, what's your question to do with the signs, is in reference to the bus, or the...
Well, it's in reference to just getting people downtown, getting them to move around and making things easier for them.
And my understanding is that that has received support for professional, professional development, this, a development of sign, a sign package, I guess. Right? The Chamber of Commerce and Bab are the ones that are taking the lead on that. I've not heard anything about that recently, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, one more question, sorry. Is it, uh, North Brattleboro Canal Street and like exit one, two, three, is that, is that the plan?
You mean for the signs?
Yeah.
I've not seen mock-ups or anything, I know that they're wanting to identify what services and, um, attractions are available at each one of the exits. But I've not seen, you know, a sort of a, a draft sign, if you like, of how that's gonna be illustrated or demonstrated or conveyed on the signs. I know that they're working with the state to something, also to sort of use a systematic approach to the signs. But that, and that's the idea, is to make more of a conscious effort to connect people on ninety-one to the downtown via exit one and exit two. Which is not so clear now, I think.
Um, under policy two, um, incorporate multimodal improvements into repaving, restriping, and signalization operations where the safety of users can be improved within the scope of work, does that...
Yeah, what is that?
Is that intended to be like all the users, like pedestrians, bikes, and cars, and trucks, and things that go over?
Yeah, uh, we, we might.
Yeah.
We might list them out, but yes, users as in all...
Users has sort of a bad connotation to it, so...
Well, yeah.
Users, do you think users has a bad connotation?
I don't know.
Nothing about it, but I just, it would be good to identify those users.
It just gets really wordy and really lengthy all the ti- it's, it's, it's a, it's a chunky enough sentence as it is, but yeah, we can, we can be more explicit about... Cause we don't wanna, we're just not talking about road users, we're talking about... We're talking about all modes of transportation and, um... Yeah, it's okay, we can, we can dispel it out more clearly, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, cause it talks about repaving, restriping, and signalization, which oftentimes means cars, trucks, you know?
Well, but that's the point, so if you're, if you're undertaking that type of work, then look at the whole street scape and consider it at the time, don't, um...
So that's what I'm saying.
Because to get to complete streets anymore...
It should spell out, you know, pedestrians included and, you know, as users, that's all I'm saying.
Bike and pedestrian, yeah.
Yeah. You can do it in a way that this doesn't get too...
Right, so, yeah, what we're really getting at is that any project that involves any one of these kinds of activities has to address all users of the, of the, of the road network at that point.
And so, like when I said, within the scope of the work, for example, if, um, there's something going on on Putney Road at one of the intersections, they're gonna do something. Well, address the need for pedestrians to get across the street there, I'm not saying you have to do it at every intersection, but do it at that time. To start making a little progress.
Yeah.
And it's similar, I mean, the intent of it is, is to match up the length of complete streets, which is, when you're designing this project at the cons- at the concept stage, you have to show why you're not gonna address the needs of non-motor vehicle users, um, if you're not proposing to address them, right? So you have to demonstrate why it can't be done, effectively. And cost could be an explanation, or safety could be an explanation of both of those things. But, um, you need to account for why you're not incorporating explicit measures to encourage and ensure the safety of bike and pedestrian users in particular.
And who does that accounting go to, or how does that, how does that happen?
If it's a state, great, state grant-based, um, project, or you're, you know, in part or in full, then you're gonna have to do that. And most of the large-scale maintenance, you know, like the repaving project that we just did on Main Street...
Yeah.
Is, um, well, first of all, it was V-Trans that did it, so they're gonna be meeting their own requirements for complete streets. But if we were to do a side street and receive a grant to do that from the state, then we have to show why.
So is that like one part of V-Trans reporting to another part of V-Trans, or is that...
Um, I'm not sure how they're proposing to do it internally, I can see different ways of doing it. It might just be that you have to meet certain criteria, and, you know, basically, it could be, it could be in the form of a checklist, or it could be a committee review. Typically, there's some kind of panel of people that meet and determine if the project meets certain criteria before they allocate the resources to it, so... I, there's lots of different mechanisms they can use.
I, I was, you know, when they did that, uh, uh, access management, Mohawk-style, um, thing out on, you know, in front of my store. That was, uh, uh, I, I was surprised and interested to hear that one part of V-Trans may have wanted to do it and the other one may not have wanted it done, you know?
Oh, I would say any state agency bigger than five people, that's entirely possible.
Well, it was, you know, safety is one thing, traffic management is another thing, and, um...
Cost is another.
Uh, cost, and yeah, so it was i- interesting, you know, um, so...
Well, certainly, there are, there are districts for V-Trans as well, and the district manager is a fairly influential person. And they have a say, um, and their set of management issues are not necessarily the same as, as Montpelier's management issues. So they're more concerned with the cost of maintenance and the complexity that's involved in that. So for instance, they're not fans of things like more roundabouts, um, for, for those reasons.
So where does complete streets fall in that?
On the roundabout question?
In, no, in Montpelier, or, um...
I can't, I, 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 I...
Unless it's new enough that it's really probably not set, yeah, yeah.
Um...
I'm just curious, you know, cause I, I think it's a, it's a great initiative, and I really appreciate that it has happened, um, and appreciate all the work that went into it. It will be interesting to see how it falls out as far as who's, who's charged with, uh, monitoring it, I guess, or, or whatever the...
I think the big challenge is, is avoiding the sense that it's an unfunded mandate.
Uh-huh, sure.
And I think that in the current context, that's gonna be extremely difficult.
That's part of the definition of mandate, isn't it? Unfunded?
It would appear so.
Yes. At least in our recent paper.
Right.
Okay. Uh, what else?
It doesn't say anything on here about, uh, boat transportation, kayaks, canoes.
That's, boat, boat commuters?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it might be easy going in one direction, but not so much in the other. And, um... No, we have not, we have not addressed waterborne transportation issues here. Um, mostly because if you're discussing the Connecticut River, that's entirely regulated by the state of New Hampshire. And if you're talking about the West River, um, you could use that as a form of, as, as your commute route, um...
Well, just because it's the Connecticut River, even if the, I mean, if the dock is on, you know, in downtown somewhere...
It's still New Hampshire.
But anything in the wa- anything into the water side of the shore is New Hampshire.
The High Water, the High Water Line is New Hampshire.
Right, but, I mean, I think she makes a very valid point, and I only say that as a user of the river and, and my boat. But, um, we possess, I don't know how many miles of riverfrontage there, some of which the town even owns, which has gotta be one of our most underutilized...
That's right.
Resources and assets that we have.
Right.
And so I think it's a valid thing to at least have somewhere in there to consider. Even if we don't envision a superhighway of water taxis and gondolas or whatever, certainly, it would, I mean, it couldn't hurt to have access to downtown for boaters, for people who come in via boat.
But are you seeing that as recreation or as transportation?
Right, I guess...
I'll tell you, my, for myself personally, I would see it as economic development, I would wanna, I would go downtown, just for the novelty of it. People would go into town, they'd go buy something, you know?
That's right.
Spend money.
Yeah.
I mean, who knows what'll become down in there for retail establishments in the future, uh, but a restaurant, a, that's convenience store, uh, you know, I mean, there, there's certainly... Even transit, not to say that people will be taking their boat to the train station or whatever, or the bus station, but, but there needs to...
Yeah, we hadn't thought about that, but that's possible.
It needs to be considered...
Yes.
That this, we live on a river, and we have, really, the whole town of Brattleboro, there is not one real significant access to the water. Anywhere, not other than the marina and the space around the, in, in the canoe place there, there's, there's nothing. And if you wanna look on the river and look at that from the river's viewpoint, I'll take you there sometime, but I mean, uh, it's...
It seems like a whole other market to tap into, and it's, I don't even think it's necessarily motorcraft, it's more like people on their kayaks and canoes out in the warmer...
Anything, right.
You know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a really, it's an interesting, um, dynamic what Brattleboro has going on, these like different nodes around the, around the city that could be connected...
That's right.
Through a more entertaining means than, you know, a car.
Yeah, I, I... We hadn't, we had not thought of it in terms of waterways and transportation, I think we had thought of it in terms of arguably economic development and, and downtown development, and certainly in terms of, um, recreation and outdoor activity, um...
I mean, if he, if parking is a problem downtown, why couldn't you encourage people to park at the Putney? Uh, this is, this is not, I'm not, this is a terrible example, terrible, but encourage them to park somewhere more in the sprawl areas. And then, if there's a lack of parking downtown, maybe their hotel is there, if you can't accommodate all these people downtown. How many hotel rooms are there downtown? I don't know, but where are all the restaurants people wanna go to that they don't see anywhere else downtown?
Yeah.
What I, what I hear frequently from other people, you know, not in the room right now, is that, and, and what we've been talking about in various venues is that, the history of downtown development in particular, and, and the existence of the railroad tracks. It's, you know, blocks easy access for Brattleboro residents and visitors to the river. And there are photos of the, an earlier time when there was the island on the Connecticut River that had, I guess, dance halls and all sorts of fun things there and was calling much more closely woven into the day-to-day life of Brattleboro, and that's really interesting to explore. And so, it's definitely on everyone's radar that gaining access to the river and using the river as a scenic resource and potentially as a transportation mode is definitely something that's there. And, you know, I, I, I hear your comments, I'm not sure if it, I'm still not sure if it ends, belongs in the transportation chapter in a sense. I mean, um, and just on the kind of actual questions, right now, we don't have a parking problem downtown in terms of the lack of access. If the town's on parking budget of anything... If the town's on parking budget is anything to go by as a guide. And, you know, that could change, it could change quite quickly. And we could have much more hotels, you know, much more, many more hotel beds and restaurants and so forth. It could become much more vibrant. And that would certainly be boosted by a better connection with the river, and we're certainly trying to engineer that where we can. There are some pretty basic physical dilemmas, and the railroad track is a major impediment to that. And there's some pretty wild schemes that have been around since the 1970s to actually facilitate that, including a boardwalk, the entire length of the block from effectively High Street to Malfunction Junction on the other side of the Hookah Dunham building, over the railroad tracks, and then down to the river. There's clearly some pretty serious engineering problems associated with that. There were times when prominent town thinkers wanted to have the Amtrak station moved to where the River Garden is
Yeah, that was one conversation.
on Main Street. And so that you would, you would come up a series of escalators from the railroad tracks where they are now, next to the Hookah Dunham, and enter right downtown. And then somehow magically be able to access the river on the other side. I've seen some pretty wild drawings, but I'm not really sure how it was gonna work. All those things are known. The plausibility or the viability of them, you know, remains unknown. I wouldn't say that there are, is a huge groundswell or movement, local movement, to bring those things into being.
I mean, I'm thinking, I'm thinking more short-term realistic. I mean, I, I like, I like where you're going with the thing over the tracks.
I think I saw calculations of the amount of lumber that was involved, it was pretty breathtaking.
The town owns a piece of land now that has river access.
Yes.
And, and, and the conversations about what might be used for that, that could be a, a place where people could come in off the river.
There are...
There's some environmental challenges.
There's some environmental hazards there and some issues there. And it's just some real basic physical stuff, like the steepness of the banks and the height of the, of the riverbank, so...
And the location of Coltar.
Right, so you end up with, it's just, there are just a set of conflicts there with that parcel that have already been explored and, and kind of set aside, is what I'd say. The idea that's interesting to pursue is that if and when New Hampshire builds the replacement bridge for the existing Hinsdale Bridge, then it opens up the existing Hinsdale Bridge as a bike-ped path.
Mm-huh.
And then opens up the question again of what to do with that island, which does belong to New Hampshire, very clearly. But it doesn't prevent that becoming a site of activity, again, the way it was back in the 1800s.
So other than the Coltar, there is, that that's the only thing stopping, putting a dock downtown?
Uh, no, I think the high, the, the high, the bank is a serious issue, and the fact that you get ice jams and, I mean, there's, there's real serious physical constraints. If you go to the marina in the middle of winter,
Yeah.
it's a very different place from, it's where it is right now. And it has the advantage of very gentle slope. And it's rare for this stretch of the Connecticut to find that. The next easiest location to identify gentle slope into the Connecticut going north is probably Putney. And guess what? There is a place where you can put in in Putney.
No, you can do it off of Old Ferry Road, too.
What's that?
Old Ferry Road.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a lot of farmland along there.
Yeah.
And to the south by Sir Susma, what was the concierge?
Yeah, there's a lot of places you can put in, I've been on the river.
I would say, I mean, you can engineer probably most places.
That's right.
But I would say, in this five-year town plan, is this the priority to put a dock in there?
I don't know, I mean, how many people would you bring downtown? Not just for the sake of using, of having them, you know, drop in wherever and come downtown. I think it, it makes the waterfront, it sets the water, it sets Brattleboro apart from other towns, because no other town is really addressing the water. So from an economic development standpoint, it becomes another asset, like, oh, let's go to, you know, if there's things going on on the waterfront, if there's green space down there, downtown. I mean, I, I don't know what, you know, I've seen the town plan, whatever it looks like, but I think there's an opportunity.
There should be something that says to explore that. I mean, enough people have expressed interest in that over the years.
I don't think it has to be complicated either, it just needs to be a, a dock, a drop-off.
Could be taken out in the winter, you know, it doesn't have to have all those... A lot of people have docks in their lake or wherever, they take them out for the winter.
All I'm saying is it should be encouraged.
Encouraged, good, good point.
Maybe it's more economic development than transportation, though, I apologize.
Well, we've definitely talked about it in land use, you know.
Yeah. We talked about the waterfront.
Right, and, and we've talked, I, I guess we've talked about it pretty actively around the Union Station project. And identified and acknowledged that that is the one point of, you know, effectively public point of access now to the river, which is a huge breakthrough. There are some explicit challenges with that side.
The brownfield, at the least of which.
Yeah.
Wasn't the original plan gonna have that grade just roll right down to the shore? No docks, no anything, but just roll that grade right down to the shore?
It's not just rolling down to the shore, it's not gonna be cleared that far.
No.
Because in order to keep the bank stabilized, there's gonna have to be vegetation.
Right.
But I think that once the other, you know, it's been capped on site, you could go through and clean up the vegetation.
Right.
Right. So there's potential in the future, and I guess, if I'm hearing timbrely correctly, you're even pushing for alternate locations from, from that, right?
I, wherever, I mean, I, I think it needs to be somewhere that connects north Brattleboro to downtown. It connects different nodes of the, the city, the town, or whatever you wanna call it.
Really, even if it was a portage trail access? You know, as you said, for canoeists and kayakers or whatever, even not a motorboat dock, you know, even if it was just someplace down there where people could string up their canoe and get out or whatever.
Or rent one?
In theory, right, well...
Even people who would rent a kayak for the day up on Putney Road might paddle down and get out and come and have lunch at a downtown restaurant, or grab a coffee and go back, I know.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, when we paddle the river from way up north down, there's always, there's a place where we can stop, and you can, you can walk a quarter mile through the woods and get to the Harpoon Brewery, you know? And it just happens to be a, a landing site where we stop to have a picnic. And I think there's a primitive camping site there, too, but...
Yeah.
You know, those kinds of places, people who access boats and go on the river, you know, they wanna be able to do those fun things.
No.
Maybe it needs to be put in, it's one of those things that it goes kind of in, where does it go in the town plan to, you know, again, to encourage?
Maybe in, in one place or another, we could have a paragraph or two, you know, about using the river and specifically about, you know, maybe starts with recreational, but sort of, you know, could mention transportation, just...
Anything's good enough to rule out the transportation.
Pardon?
I think it's good not to rule out the transportation.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
I, I do think it's interesting that White River Junction, Bellows Falls, and Brattleboro all have pretty, not totally ideal, but pretty good locations to be able to connect, all of them, together.
Well, the dams are kind of an issue.
Even out on the water, you couldn't...
Yeah, you can't get there.
How do, how do people make that route from, yeah, I know the dams are there, but White River Junction? They put in there?
They, they portage, there's portage trails up and over each one of them, where you can just go in and hike around the thing with your canoe.
Yeah.
Most of them are well-marked with portage trails.
Which explains why there's not much motorboat traffic on this section of the Connecticut, say, compared to the very northern section of the Connecticut in Massachusetts. So if you're talking about north of Turner's Falls, from Turner's Falls up to Northfield, it's pretty heavily used by motorboats all season long. And then south of Turner's Falls is another section, and then from there...
Springfield, Hollyoke, is it?
Yeah, all the way to the Oxpeck, which is just, just another Hollyoke. It's pretty heavily trafficked with, with motorboats. And there are a series of, you know, marinas and docks and so forth, and businesses associated to it all the way up and down that stretch of the Connecticut. But in every instance, it's broad, flat expanses of ground that allow for easy, you know, access with a, you know, trailer and so forth. And services like gas and so forth being available at the water's edge. So, which is not to say that that's what we're attempting to achieve, but in terms of a navigable river by motorboat, this stretch from, from Burnin' to, I guess, White River Junction is, you know, it's not, there's not a lot of motorboat traffic for those kinds of reasons.
Well, so...
I might tend to disagree with that.
Yeah, I would, too.
Yeah.
Well, the intensity of the use is not, of motorboat traffic is not high here compared to those other stretches that I'm referring to.
Well...
Well, maybe by comparison, but there's definitely, I know as a kayaker on the river, there's a lot of motorboats in this whole section from Putney to Brattleboro all the time.
Yeah.
Can be an issue when you're in a small little boat.
Well, there is that.
And then again, up near Springfield, Vermont, there's another whole track there that we've just, in, in our own circle X-ed out of, we don't wanna go there in kayaks and canoes, because there are too many motorboats, and it's not fun.
Right, okay.
But it might not be with the same amount of density as in Massachusetts, only because there's more people there, I think, and those are, you know, maybe in the Hamptons there, there's actual marinas with gas and, like you were saying.
Right.
And, and I don't see that so much.
Right.
Like at the, at the Springfield-Vermont boat ramp, there's not gas there, it's just a park.
Right.
But there's a lot of mo, it's mostly motorboat activity there.
Oh. So anyway, I think that particularly the canoe-kayak thing and the portage-trail angle is interesting to explore. And then, you know, the equivalent to kayak and canoe storage or parking downtown, so that you could, you could secure your boat and then do your thing for the day, and then...
Yeah, I don't know about a drop-in, I mean, maybe, I would think like, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
It could just be another way to get travelers and tourists, I mean, just, there's some potential there
Yeah, sure.
in some way.
So could we say that it'd be good to have a paragraph anyway
Yeah.
in this chapter about those?
Right.
A bit of discussion of it, a little bit, you know. I don't, I don't think we need to make it a policy and action kind of thing.
Okay.
But something that acknowledges it and the possibilities, and...
And even if all of this cross-referenced something in economic development or, or recreation, that's fine.
I have another little thing like that, and I'm not sure where it goes. I don't see it here in transportation, but maybe, one of the things we talked about was a better kiosk system at the train station that would tie into town, and whether that would go under economic development, or whether it comes under transportation, I'm not, I'm not sure. But conversations with Bab and with others, but, so when the people come in from out of town on the train, say for instance, they know where they can get a taxi or where the, there's like a kiosk of, of stuff there that can...
I, there is a paragraph that...
And we've talked about that numbers of times, I just didn't see it here.
Yeah, there's a, a paragraph that talks about making improvements to the station as a top priority.
Yeah.
So I think I could include it there.
Yeah.
So that's page seven.
Right above the freight system.
And isn't, wasn't that one of the intents of the BABB thing, or?
I think it's included in that, so we can confirm that. But I think it was intended that there'd be
Yeah.
signs that, that, that both, that do, to think, you know, that tell people where the train station is, and then tell people where the train station, wherever the answer is.
Yeah, I think Andrea talked about that, but, but it would be nice to include it in here and, and at least a couple sentences of some detail that, that we're acknowledging that that wants to be done. And the, the other thing under policy four, the last action step, it just says, "Continue to educate the community about transportation alternatives through events and initiatives," blah, blah, blah. I guess that's a pretty general, a general statement, and I like it. I was wondering if that needed to be, have more specifics, like, including, I know the Energy Committee works on some transportation stuff, they're, they're pushing the way to go.
Well, there's...
Car challenge and stuff, but it would be nice to have something here where we are encouraging people, not just one week a year, but that businesses encourage carpooling as, you know, some, maybe, I don't know, it just needs to be a little bit more specific there, I guess.
Are you talking about Action 4.5?
Yeah, just, just continue to educate the community, that's fine. But maybe it needs to include around carpooling and waste coming, because we're talking about how to, alternatives to single-occupant vehicles, so... And I don't see the word carpools anywhere here, and I think that's, to me, when I think of alternatives, I think of carpools as one, or park-and-ride lots, and not that we're some big city with... But there was talk at some meeting when there was the public here about having maybe out in some of the surrounding towns, having places where people could gather to carpool or something, almost like a park-and-ride lot, like out on Route 30 or up on Route 5 near Putney or something.
Two lots were just announced here this week, yeah, two park-and-ride lots, where were they?
There's one at Brown Court, and the other one that was announced on I-Brattleboro was the Putney, one at Putney Inn.
Right.
Or Putney Friday.
The one at, the one at Brown Court's been in place for some time, yeah.
Right, and there's a little bus stop there with a bench and a shelter top, and also, it's clearly marked the parking lot, so I was just there today looking at it.
Right.
I have a question, buses that stop at the Transportation Center, do they have to get a permit or something, or can any big vehicle just stop there?
Oh, yeah, this right here, thank you.
It's probably a dumb question, but I, I don't know. Like Thomas Transportation, if they wanted to pick up a group of people there on Saturday afternoons or Friday afternoons, because they have, I heard something on the radio about they do trips to New York, they go back and forth, they leave in the morning, come back at night.
There's no reason why they couldn't use it, I mean, the, the Transportation Center is pretty much what it says it is. It's the hub for two regional bus services. So theoretically, you can catch a bus in Wilmington and land at the Transportation Center, and then switch to another bus and get as far as Hanover, New Hampshire, if everything plays well. Because that would be the, the full extent of the Connecticut River Transit line in the north, in a northerly direction. And so there are frequent times when there's a mover bus from, mover bus from Wilmington, and then a CRT bus out of Rockingham, and then the local bus service, which is now also operated by Connecticut River Transit, uses the Transportation Center as a bus stop as well.
A lot of buses.
You can, I think if you're there early in the morning, it's good, there are times when you drive down there or walk down there, and there are literally four buses in a row. And they're all somewhere else, I mean, they're all different buses.
They're all different buses and companies, but are any of them doing the same route?
No, I mean, there's some degree of coordination, so there's the local bus, there's the Wilmington bus, and there's the, there's the bus that basically goes between, the CRT which goes from here through Putney
Yeah, there's a lot of times when there's three buses.
to Montpelier Falls and Rockingham.
Yeah.
So, so in any way, one of the, there would, there would not be a problem, I don't think, in Thomas Transportation, saying to people that they're gonna meet in there at 2:00 o'clock and I said it afternoon and go from there, I don't think that's an issue.
Just curious.
For years, a lot of that has taken place in Hanaford's Plaza. Cosmascos from Deerfield and a lot of these big tour agencies, I've observed over the years, will meet, have people park in Hanaford's Plaza there, and they'll pick them up, take them off and go wherever they go and come back.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
That night or days later.
Usually to, usually to the casinos in Connecticut.
I think they're up there, because one place is the same as the next, and that's free parking up there, so...
Right, right. And so that's the usual kind of tour bus thing that happens.
Yeah, there's the one thing Gary just showed me on the very last page, page 10 on the top, about to encourage carpool, about the park-and-ride lots, it's there. But I would just like to have something, a sentence there somewhere, again, about the carpooling among area business, industry and businesses, to be specific, because we did talk about that.
At least when you read it, it should give you examples, so you know what those transportation alternatives are.
Yes, yes, it's not, it's a little vague.
Okay, that's fine.
But that's all.
Thing that we talked about was having specifically, you know, motorized chairs and stuff like that mentioned in here, I think.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I think we took.
I don't remember that.
Well, it was.
But that's okay.
I mean, I think it's one of those complete streets challenges.
Yeah.
And I think I have, I have conflicting views, I feel like as a set of road users, they're not well catered to. And there is this other question, which is, is it legitimate to have a vehicle that makes the operator that vulnerable? A road vehicle? So I don't see it addressed in any explicit way in complete streets, and I think it does present traffic safety challenges, and I think that it highlights the vulnerability and the lack of access that the motor scooter users confront every day.
Yeah.
So I think there's some real challenges in accommodating them as, as road users.
Were there not conversations held at the state level around the time the Segway hit the scene, when the state of Vermont tried to decide, I mean, there are two different things, but it's similar in the concept where you're kind of out there in an unprotected device that's motorized, that's carrying you along the edge of the, in that border zone between the road traffic stream and the pedestrian stream and the bicycle stream, and as you all have noted, there's certainly a few of them in Brattleboro here.
Yeah, but they're wearing helmets.
What's that, the?
The Segway people?
Oh, no, I didn't mean the Segway people, I meant the scooters, there's a lot of these scooters.
The whole Segway gang, kind of.
Power chairs, jazzy scooter chairs, whatever.
The Segway thing has kind of taken a dive ever since the CEO dived off a cliff with one.
Yeah, right.
With a helmet on.
I've been in a lot of cities, you can do tours, Segway tours.
Right. Yeah. I've seen them used, you can rent them in places like Minneapolis.
A lot of places have them for more of an novelty thing now.
Right, and police departments still in some places.
It was originally said that post offices and police departments and everything were going to get them, and they were going to be winter versions and whatever, but it must not stand out quite like they expected, but.
No, and so.
Nonetheless, the scooter chairs are everywhere though.
The scooter chairs are, and, and they, they present an interesting challenge in, in lots of different ways, so for instance, they're pretty bulky and and difficult to control in the context of if you're going to use them on a, on a sidewalk or on a shared path with cyclists and pedestrians, because then all of a sudden, they're sort of the biggest object
Right.
in that, in that scenario, and that becomes challenging. And, you know, so, and they're out on the road and they're the, by far the smallest object and up against an eighteen-wheeler, it doesn't look so good, so.
It should be included in the conversation now, for sure.
You know,
No, the.
I don't know how to address it in an easy way in the chapter.
That doesn't make them go away though, right?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just asking for guidance here.
Well, I, like, for instance, policy three, promote bicycle and pedestrian mobility, I think it needs to be in there, I don't know what the wording is, but, you know, people that are on motorized chairs.
Just have an awareness of that there are motorized chairs. People who, and there needs to be an awareness of an allowances included or something like that.
Or at least, at least mention those users as users, you know, that's all I'm saying.
I think they should be identified as people who have transportation and access needs and they need to be at least acknowledged and.
Yeah, I think we'd be totally remiss in that.
If we didn't acknowledge their existence and.
And in that category, would there then be any, any sort of regulations imposed upon them, I mean, any sort of anything, and if so, whose, whose position is that to do so?
Yeah.
I mean, like, what if the guy wants to travel?
There's, it's discussed in the ADA regulations and I can't really speak to it off the top of my head, but I have heard a presentation on it. So I have some materials. If I recall, well, I just don't.
I mean, but just thinking out loud, so as we, I'm, I'm just trying to think out loud here, do, is it something that we should, that we should have some sort of, not ordinance concern, no, I don't.
I think you can have an ordinance, actually, I think you can have an ordinance.
Well, then, maybe that's the right answer, but just something to, to, to have some sort of definitions or standards under which those things are operated. I mean, not, whether it's not, don't go out at night with one, or they got to have reflectors or who knows what, but is it necessary to have a, any sort of directive about how those are used in the town, in the transportation part of the town plan?
I think if you're gonna, I think if you're gonna start addressing ADA compliance and road regulations, then it's outside the scope of the town plan, and I think, I think I'm
We'll give him a headache.
I'm aware that they're not adequately accounted for and they're not adequately necessarily catered to, but I'm also aware that the town plan is not the appropriate place to regulate the use of a, a vehicle, because that's outside the scope of the town plan.
But we can bring it up to consciousness.
Sure, I mean, that's what, that's exactly what I'm saying, so the purpose would be to to initiate dialogue because we've identified them as, as, as existing road users, however, however they end up being road users, we know they're road users, and we know they've got needs, and so we need to do our best to identify what those needs are and, and, and explain their existence, and then there are other, there are other organs of town government that need to address if and how they're going to be regulated.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not, it's not the role of the town plan to start regulating vehicle movement on a, on a road.
But we need to talk about, because that, I mean, was it Elizabeth, the woman that was here?
Yes.
Uh, you know, I mean, she, her, her her concerns were things like, you know, crosswalks and, you know, where clearly.
The angle of the entryway to the, yeah, there are a series of things that are real direct concern that should be account, you know, should be in this chapter that address their issues.
Yeah.
So I just would like to call them out as a, as a class of.
Road users.
Users, yeah.
Sidewalk and road users.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And typically you find them on the road because the sidewalk is not adequate for their, doesn't accommodate their vehicle.
Right.
And there's some really profound challenges with that, given the, the landscape.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Okay.
Um, I'm forgetting her name from Youth Services came here and spoke with us about.
Oh, she just recently resigned.
Alison Billy.
Yes, thank you, she spoke about was there a way to get better beeline coverage that coordinated for teen activities, and so I don't know if that needs to, as a, again, as users for the bus.
There is a, there is, there is a process. There's a process of review of the program associated with the bus service that's attached to the funding, and that's underway.
And that's where she would go or people would go.
And that's where she'd take that.
Yeah, okay.
I think she had set up a, kind of a coalition that were looking at, at the transportation issues of use.
I just wanted to note about it, so I just wanted to know where that goes.
Yeah, of you throughout the region, and I don't know where that's at, perhaps the one in regional, she can give me in.
My understanding is that her agency, because it's not just Brattleboro specific, but it is sort of region-wide, has actually had conversations with the bus, the regional bus provider who also now operates the local system, which is Connecticut River Transit, and there is a.
Yeah, with the school district.
And the school district, right, so.
There's a whole bunch of people.
I, I think it's, again, it's one of those things that's we should consider identifying as an issue within the transportation chapter because it's clearly a challenge or a gap.
A gap, yeah. I don't think it needs to be a policy or an action, but it needs to be mentioned in there so it, it can be something in the the body of that chapter.
Right.
Somewhere. And I guess under, again, that same one that I spoke about initially, policy four, action four point five, the continue the education, I guess that would include bicycle safety education and stuff like that, do we need to be again?
That was elsewhere.
Was that, was that somewhere else?
Three point seven?
All right, there it is, audits.
Yes.
Related to safety, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Because that was, I'm just looking at my notes from other meetings where somebody had spoke about bicycle safety issues.
And to take that further back up to your, almost your earlier comment about community participation, I think it is probably worthy of us having an explicit action that addresses community participation.
Yeah.
But when I look at this, that's where I see the users, bicycle and pedestrians, completing the audits.
Yes.
And so that is public participation.
Yeah, that was what I was speaking of, yeah.
And that's, that's an entirely different thing from what we're asking for in three point one, which is, um.
What, three point two?
And three point two, which is coming up, well, three point two to some, three point two to some extent also calls out for public participation, but three point one is is an explicit request for the Department and the Public Works to extend what they already have, which is they do their own sidewalk audit, broken out into three grades. Good, fair, and poor, and it's that, and they have a staff member that literally walks the sidewalks, every, all sidewalks.
No, I'm aware of all that, I just, there's just been a, a request from people to have citizen input into that in some way.
Right.
So that the places where that.
Three point seven is the community input and three point one is a, is an infrastructure management, so they're quite, so they're quite different actions, in other words. So there's a technical thing going on in three point one that's specific mostly to Public Works, and then it's going to influence the capital budget. And three point seven is where the public gets to participate in audits and comment on sidewalk stability.
So that, that number, three point seven, allows that, that to happen?
Yes.
That's what it is.
That's what it is.
Okay.
Three point seven is the community participation action associated with policy three.
Right, just, I guess it didn't jump out at me that way, but.
Right, well, in order, we, we can, yeah, yeah, and the good thing there is to sort of add, if that, if that's your take, then we need to change the sentence.
Just a little, I guess, I guess my first, my initial request was just a little more clarity.
Right, well, just, and it clicked for me then, when, when I was looking at it.
Yeah, but I can, they're all related, but they're, but they're different, I see what you're saying, and I mean, I'm not in any means taking away from the town there, whole system, but that there's, we've received enough input from people about that.
Right.
At those different meetings that we had, like at the high school and all that.
Right.
I wonder, under policy four, that, action four point one, could, could that be expanded a little bit to say something about to emphasize underserved groups, particularly youth or something like that?
Elderly and youth.
Youth or something, you know, I mean, just something to call out a couple of.
Well, the first thing I want to say is that the elderly are a major component of the current ridership, so it, I don't know. There are some ways you could think about their access to transportation services and they're underserved, but in terms of who gets on the bus.
That's who gets on the bus.
There, there are significant, if not a majority, there are certainly a significant percentage.
So how about youth, I guess that's.
Not so much, and I mean, I think it's worthy of, worth making that comment. I'm not sure if this is the most appropriate place to put it, and I, I, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
Maybe in the text of the, of this, talking about the bus?
I, I think, I think it might be better, I think it might be better in the text to talking about the bus.
Okay. Should the, um, should the mover be included in that as they also serve Brattleboro?
We don't provide any financial support to the, to the mover, whereas we actually do, that's what that means, action four point one expresses the fact that we have a contract with C I T.
For municipal bus service?
Yeah, we're paying for it.
I do talk about the mover in terms on page six for regional bus connections.
Right.
And C I T as well.
So support in that sentence means something a little bit more than writing a letter, it means sending a nice check.
Right, it means subsidize.
Yeah, more than that, it means we pay, we pay for the bus service.
Right. Okay, well, we've got a few more minutes for transportation, if anybody has any other comments or questions or. On just transportation? Yeah, we're going to talk about, just finish up this. Is road, road network separate?
That's included.
Road network is part of transportation.
I, I, um, I think it would be prudent if there was also, and this may not be connected to vehicular traffic, but in a sense, I think there needs to be a clear, I don't know that there isn't, but a, a not, clear way for people who happen to live on a class four road that may eventually have more houses now than when it did initially, to upgrade that to class three, or whatever the tier is to the tier, to where it goes from not maintained to maintained, I don't know that there's too many roads that qualify for that, but the few that there are, are, are pretty important to the people that live on them, and is that something that's addressed in this transportation?
It's not, and it's, that's interesting because this was written pre-storm. And I didn't really tinker with it too much to address storm, but we did have that meeting in September where we discussed not encouraging development in other areas, so maybe roads are obviously the purview of the select board, but I think that it is one of those kind of post-storm discussions that maybe should make its way into here.
Well, it seems like there certainly are some roads, whether they've been destroyed by the storm or not, there certainly are roads out there that twenty, thirty, forty years ago had no houses on them or only a couple, and now have, have more and they're, you know, they're class four, they're unmaintained or private roads, and I'm just curious as to how that process goes for those, for anyone.
Class four is not a private road.
Class four's not private, that's a town, town trail or something, and what's the tick down from class four, is that trail?
Legal town trail.
Legal town trail.
That is a classification.
Yeah, that's, that's lower.
Lower than class four, right?
I don't know what, if any, length of town trail we have.
Well, class four is not maintained, right?
Class four, I believe you have to maintain the
Bridges and culverts.
Bridges and culverts, but you don't have to clear the snow or, that kind of maintenance.
Right, there, there's no plowing, and there's no commitment to maintain possibility in mud season. But bridges and culverts.
And that's the difference between four and three?
Yes.
I see, and so something like Edward Heights, for example. Where does that fall on that sort of spectrum? There's a lot of houses on there, it was, I, I think originally it was never built to the satisfaction of the town, but that's a municipal road, the infrastructure in there has been sort of, I don't know how, where they, how they call it, but it's been maintained by the town to those houses in there. D P W is pretty familiar with the sewer lines and water lines in there, but that's not anything that's officially maintained by the town, and that's an in-town road.
I can't speak to Edward Heights, but what I would say is that I would be reluctant to change or express, express a commitment in the town plan that people on class four roads should have a clear mechanism that's different from the current arrangement, which is that they make requests to the select board.
That's how it goes?
Yes, because the, the select board meets, when, when that request is heard, they're meeting as road commissioners, and it's them as a body that determines whether they're going to take up a road or not, which would be moving it from class four to class three.
And is that just a subjective decision that's made during that meeting, or is there a formula or standard or something to calculate when a road rises to the occasion of being qualified to upgrade?
I don't know if this town has a policy, some towns do.
There's a petition process effectively?
But that, there is a, in statute, there's a process
Right.
by which you do it, but there is no standards or policy guidance on when you're going to do it and when you're not, some towns do have policies, I'm not sure.
Right, and the town, the town has a standard that if you were, as you would be aware, that if you're going to create a new road as a private road, say, to service a subdivision, that it must be built to town specifications at the outset, so that if you need sense that it does become taken up as a town road, the town is not confronted with the situation where it has to upgrade the road to make it conform to road, to town road standards, and the town road standards are the minimum road standards set up by the state. So to go back to the original question, I don't, I'm sure there's, are some anomalies such as Edward Heights, and I'm not sure what the. such as Edward's height, Edward Heights, and I'm not sure what the story with that is, um, but what I would say is that the roads that I'm thinking of that have come up as part of recent debates before the select board, um, in the far northwestern reaches of the town, um, the evidence of upgrading a road from class four to class three is that it does strongly promote further subdivision and development, and we don't have, at this point, I think most of those districts are either rural or rural residential, we don't have, you know, we have fairly lax development controls, in other words, rural residential, it can be as small as three acres, so there would be potential for further development of homes on those roads if they're upgraded from four to three, and I think it, it's a reasonable question for the town to address, which is, that puts a fairly substantial demand on emergency services and, and Public Works, um, for maintenance and, and plowing, and I have to say, from a budgetary standpoint, the town is not, um, you know, views those kinds of things very seriously, and I think from a planning commission standpoint, and certainly from a planning professional standpoint, we would wanna ask very serious questions about why we would wanna encourage, uh, further development in areas of town that have already been identified and recognized as areas where we don't want increased development of a substantial nature. So I guess I'm speaking, I guess I'm presenting an argument, and it's, it's for the commission, it's for the commission to determine, but I guess I'm presenting a, a counterargument, which is to say, everyone who buys a parcel, parcel of land on a class four road is aware that they're buying a parcel of land on a class four road, everyone who buys a parcel of land on a class four road is aware, by driving to the parcel, that it's not as well maintained as a class three road. So, they're also paying taxes for a parcel of land that's on a class four road, so the argument that you could make later on, that, hey, I never realized that it was gonna be like this, I want a class three road now, um, has some relevance, and then what we should be thinking about as a planning commission, or what you should be thinking about as a planning commission, and us as a, as a department, is what signals are you giving for development in remote parts of town that already are challenged in terms of access to emergency services, and where we have other assets that we may wanna protect, including wildlife or wilderness attributes, and thus not wanna actually encourage a more intense residential development.
Judging.
So you, by, by signals, you mean the, the language that's in here that doesn't necessarily promote development?
Right, I, I think in the, in the, in the future land use section of the Land Use Chapter, and other parts of the Land Use Chapter, and the Natural Resources Chapter, we make statements that indicate that the planning commission's view is that we should discourage more intensive residential development in these remote areas of town, and certainly not do anything to encourage it, and an upgrade of a road from four to three is a signal of encouragement for further development.
Okay, judging.
Yeah.
So is it our job to pick out roads that should or should not be?
No.
No.
No, because we don't, you don't need as road commissioners, the select board does. There's a, there's a well-recognized mechanism, and the people who, and it's been used this month, people, people understand, people who are concerned about currently living on a class four road who wanna have it upgraded to a class three road, have made presentations to the select board, when they, and they, when they're doing it, the select board are meeting as road commissioners, and they're making their decision on the basis of the information that they have before them, and they're consulting with the town attorney and the Director of Public Works in their deliberations. If it goes, if it goes further...
Signals to her.
The town has to actually review the town plan, so, so if the road commissioners were gonna hold a public hearing to discuss the upgrade of a road from four to three, they have to actually review the town plan as part of that process. So, there is an important element of information that would be contained in the town plan that we should, we should be aware of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else about the transportation chapter? That's this whole thing. Everything in there, speak to or question. This is probably the last time we will be doing this in this detail, so...
On transportation?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I hope so.
Just looking at my newsletter from Vital Communities up in Hanover area, I'm, I'm sure you know of them, um, under their transportation, they have their goal, or whatever, their mission, works to mitigate traffic congestion and reduce reliance on single occupant vehicle commuting. That's their...
That's nice, that's good.
Under both, two different issues, so, and one of the things they say, engage citizens in transportation planning, just a general way for, some wording there for you on bicycles and pedestrians, and the part that I forgot around carpooling was, provide incentives, encourage build, uh, they said it here, provide employee incentives to reduce single occupant vehicular travel. Now, we can't do that, but there can be, maybe through the Energy Committee or somebody else, you know, when, when we're talking about carpooling, just something about encouraging carpooling with businesses offering incentives or something. Sorry not to get detailed again, but I just, these are just pretty cool things that they're doing up there.
Yeah, it's good.
And the Vital Communities people go across state lines, they're both Vermont and New Hampshire, they're in the upper valley.
Even the buses go across state lines today.
Yeah, amazing, huh?
CIRT goes across state.
Yes, I know, that's exactly where they, yeah, I know, it's actually remarkably hard to do. It is.
I think overall, it's...
It's good.
So, what you just said, I was thinking about this, and I just decided...
Did I trip you off some?
Well, it'll, it'll be quick, it'll be real quick, I just wanted to know why, on table one, page four of the transportation thing, it doesn't have anything about Route, Bridge Street that goes to New Hampshire, or Route 9 that goes to New Hampshire, or the traffic between Massachusetts and 91. Is there, is it, is it just because it's, do they do counts there, maybe they don't do counts?
Well, I-91, between exit one and exit two, I, I'm, I'm trying to remember whether they've got a, um, account for somewhere between the state line and exit one.
I think they do, I think they have it at the state line or something like that.
I think they may have it at the visitor's center, um, or around about that point. I don't know, I think I looked at that, and there were like chunks of time where there was no data.
Yeah, I think, I can take a look for those.
Yeah.
So you said Bridge Street and...
Um, just how people are coming, I mean, 'cause this tells, tells us how people are going and circulating around Brattleboro, but not necessarily who's coming in and out.
Right.
Um, which, maybe that's not transportation, maybe that's...
No, it's transportation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can see, it may have been that the data was spotty, and so I couldn't get the particular years I was looking at.
We were a bit challenged with how squatty it got at various times, um...
But I do think it's interesting how many people commute to Brattleboro from other smaller towns, or even from New Hampshire. Are people commuting to Brattleboro from Massachusetts? I don't think I know of anyone, but I, I'm just saying.
Usually it's the other way.
It happens the other way.
Yeah, I mean, I think the Bridge Street would be more telling than the something on I-91 at the state line, but...
It would be good to get Bridge Street for a whole lots of different reasons. There was data around that I can never, I tried quite hard to find out what the origin of the data was, there used to be data that you could access about, um, the number of people who commuted from Greenfield to Brattleboro and Brattleboro to Greenfield, and then...
Oh.
And that kinda data.
You can get that from the census, but...
From the census, I guess.
But the new census data has been really difficult to work with, and I don't think they have out the new journey to work data.
Right.
So I can get it from 2000.
Yeah, and it's...
And even if it was out for 2010, their new website is just awful. But, no, I could try to, I could try to get that.
Right, 'cause we got it for Keene to Brattleboro and Brattleboro to Keene, all that kinda stuff, and it must, yeah, it would've been the 1990s.
Even Vernon with 142 would be an, an interesting number to see.
Right.
And is it, is it, I don't know if it's just about work, but it's about some people who live here who work at home, um, on Herman, you know, where, where are people...
Commute that way, too.
Going, where are they stopping?
Sure.
Yeah.
In general, the pattern that we've observed for Route 9 heading west, and 91 to some extent is that it's pretty, it took a pretty significant hit with the onset of recession, and it has recovered some, but not entirely, and I think that the leg of Route 9 that goes east from the, you know, from 91, uh, across to Chesterfield, has similarly been impacted, but that remains one of the busiest intersections in the state, that round, that we're gonna round about.
You know, you know, what's interesting is that with the GPS, if you're going, even if you're coming downtown in some cases, depending on where that line is, the GPS will take you from Massachusetts all the way up to exit three, to North Brattleboro, and back down.
Oh, interesting.
It, it doesn't take you through exit two, ever, um, it rarely takes you to exit one, too.
Sounds like GPS.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you know, it means it's just...
What's the word, recalculating?
Recalculating, yeah.
Recalculating.
Yeah, clearly, clearly whoever programmed it lives somewhere named Gary and doesn't want people getting off at exit two. Um, so, um, what can I say?
I don't know how that works, I don't know how they map that route, but...
No, there's people that come flying past our house and smash into the tree almost at the end of the road, insisting that they can get to Brookline from there, and it's like, well, cut down trees, there you make out, so, um, so, yeah, it's, yeah. So, anything else? And I think that, that last question's good, and I think we were waiting on that census data to, to guide us with there, and that, that old data is very old.
And oftentimes, the census data doesn't come out till years after the census, 'cause by the time they package it all...
It'll be 2015.
Not that long.
It'll be a long time.
No, actually...
Okay, anybody?
Yeah, I think it'll be right.
Any more?
Everybody said going once, twice, gone.
That's what I just said.
I think it was, it was like 2004, 2005, first.
We're only at 15 over, that's not bad.
Right.
Uh, the last item, um, is the discussion of future land use categories, and, uh...
We brought you something.
Yeah?
Oh, boy.
To look at.
You wanna hand it out?
Sure.
Can I?
Sorry for the viewing audience, you don't have anything to look at right now.
For the audience members?
Oh my, look at this fancy map.
This is actually, um, a very weird combination of ancient and modern techniques.
That's you.
So, if you, if you really wanna know how we did this... Don't you think it's kinda funny?
That trace paper?
Yes, it's tracing paper over a mat.
Scanned.
And then we colored in on the tracing paper, then we scanned it, and then we printed it on a very flashy color printer. What do you think?
Love it.
Isn't it cool? Took us a while to figure out the steps, it was kinda funny.
I've always had that, rabbit red.
And kids coloring in pencils.
Do they get more? Oh, my goodness.
So the treasure is where the round circles are?
Yeah, something like that.
The what are the...
Treasure.
Need to orient you, you know, 'cause it's very different than how future land use maps have been done in the past, town plans.
We're creating a whole new, uh...
Uh, we might be just catching up.
That's that map, it's the town.
So in the past, um, town plans, at least the, the existing one, the future land use map is really the zoning map, um, maybe with a couple tweaks, I haven't looked at it that closely, um...
You mean this map that you gave us, and all the, you bound it together for some of us, the big thing from your wall?
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty much an 11 by 17 version of the zoning map.
Is that the southern loop connector you have drawn in there?
It's not the southern loop connector.
Oh, okay.
No, no.
We decided not to talk about that anymore.
Yeah, right, that was, that was so, 2009, all right?
No, 2004, or something like that.
Oh, no, we did it in 2009.
Five, whatever.
So what we were attempting to do, which is pretty standard practice, is to kind of take that more conceptual view of the town, not get into all the nitty-gritty, nitty-gritty details of zoning, um, so that somebody that comes to Brattleboro might be able to look at it and say, oh, okay, that's kind of what they want, they don't really want development out here, they want it here, or, and not have to depend on the zoning to figure out everything that's on the future land use map. So we really wanted to simplify what is there, which doesn't mean that it's deconstructing the zoning, that comes later, but it wouldn't necessarily have to, you know, be this simplified either. So what we started with is a couple of future land use districts, uh, we designated kind of a growth area, that's that southern loop connector.
Everything inside the Beltway, everything inside 91.
The Beltway, yeah.
Yes, the Beltway, the Brattleboro Beltway, somebody called it that once, they said, are you from California or Washington, D.C.?
I like that.
That's straight off the new bridge, right?
'Cause I don't know that I really like growth area, so, um, anyways, but this is, you know, we constantly talk about the urban area of Brattleboro, where we have utilities, water, sewer, you know, the road network, so this is just kind of a line demarking really where we want to encourage growth, um, as opposed to the western, you know, west of 91.
Taken out. Is that a chunk taken out there, where it's RC?
Yes, the RC chunk.
Recreational commercial?
Nope.
Roman Catholic, oh, no.
Not Roman Catholic, resource constraint.
Resource constraint, the new religion.
Railroads, Roman Catholics, railroads and...
So we can go into detail on the, the growth area, like what's in there, um, so your, your most restrictive is the RC, it's, right now, it's resource constraint, so these are the areas that we really don't wanna be encouraging development, and there can be a couple of reasons why, this is the area of a lot of steep slopes, um, this is, you've got Pleasant Valley reservoir, so you've got some important water resources, some of it scenic, which we've designated, so if you look at that, just north of exit two, that big RC area is when you're driving on 91 and you...
Retreat farm lands.
The retreat farm, yeah.
Right.
Along the West River, it's the, the nice backdrop that you see as you're driving Route 30.
The really steep slopes off the back of the Skalen property?
Yes.
Yeah, um, when you're, the Ames Hill, Heinsberg Road, that area in between there, uh, you've got, was it Jinsing Hill? You've got Round Mountain, so it's pretty steep in there, um, you've got a lot of the farmland, active farmland, um, that's going on there, and so we envision, I mean, if something like this was, was the direction that we go, we'd envision maybe even symbols there to show, well, what's special about that area, why is there steep slopes, I mean, the whole northwest corner is, got important wildlife connections into Marlborough and Demerston, that connect greater onto New Fane and even Dover.
Corridor.
So we would wanna put some of those things on there to signify what is the special resource that makes it a constrained area. It is an area where there's residential development, we're not saying that you can't do that, we're saying we really don't want more development here.
So that's, uh, this would be more or less a, um, a guide to, um, future zoning?
Yes, exactly.
What's IND?
Industrial.
Industry, oh, yeah, that's right.
Huh.
And then the orange circles, you'll see a circle just north, I guess, of the 91 Canal Street interchange, and then one on Putney Road, and then one on, focused on West Brattleboro Village, and then one further out on Route 9, and they're designated as neighborhood centers.
Those orange circles?
Yeah.
Yes.
And again, that doesn't, in this sort of parallelance here, it, it doesn't...
It doesn't strictly define, you know, tightly define the area, it's just...
Yeah.
But, I mean, West Brattleboro Village, obviously, um, we've got the suburban, sorry, the rural commercial district out by, um, Tri-Park and Westgate and those neighborhoods up in there, and kind of the commercial development that you have going on that serve those residents. those residents to some extent.
Why doesn't downtown have a big circle?
Well, on an earlier draft, I did have one.
Yeah.
Um, so maybe it would at this pulled out version. The next one that you got, which is on a, um, vertical, which is on a roadmap from the Chamber.
Yeah.
I've actually called out the downtown, um, in that area.
Okay.
And then the yellow, the TN area, we call that. Not Tennessee, although I'm sure there's nice parts of Tennessee.
There's a lot of banjo kind of soundtrack in this neighborhood.
There are.
But it stands for traditional neighborhood.
So these are, are compact neighborhoods, walkable, connected street system. And even in that, you know, traditionally there was factories and the housing. So you end up with the Cotton Mill Hill. You end up with the Burr Street, the ST factories, um.
Well, the old, old traditional neighborhoods, you could walk to all those places and to work also, so.
Right.
That's the way many European towns still are.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
So the idea here isn't to homogenize everything that's within a line. It's just to give a flavor of what it is, pretty much.
Yep.
Sort of the dominant flavor.
Yeah.
Yep.
In, in a way.
And I think from a, from a planning practice standpoint, including drafting, the zoning and subdivision regulations are new, which is a, already flagged as a major project after the town plan is implemented. And they would be, that rewrite of those two documents would be guided by the town plan. So this, this is, this is the part of the land use chapter that would guide the drafting of, of those documents in, in key ways. And so.
And including these definitions of that.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, and these are just, they're not real refined.
Right, right.
They were to hopefully convey what we were thinking.
Right.
Um, one of the areas that I wasn't able, we didn't really work through was the residential, um, piece kind of up near, uh, New Chapter.
Yes.
Exactly what to call that or how to, um, how to get it encouraging infill residential development up there. The neighborhood commercial, or neighborhood center would get it, some of the mixed use that we'd like to encourage. And, and we'd have to, you know, the descriptions are not consistent yet. I'd, I'd wanna work through them a lot more.
Uh-huh.
Which brings up another point. In order to keep this process moving, I think it would be beneficial to have a working group of planning commissioners that maybe we, to work through some of these things.
Well, in the interest of getting it done in a timely way, probably, yeah.
Yeah. We think that it's one of those sections of the plan. You know, right now, this is sort of a draft map and we've got the technique down that we're relatively happy with. You know, we're gonna generate these kinds of maps remarkably quickly, actually.
As long as you have scissors, right?
You've got land use.
Yeah, got scissors.
In November.
And, um, and as long as the photocopy keeps on playing. Um, so what I'd say is the way I think this sort of works as an exercise is to have people, you know, look at the definitions and look at the map and bounce it and ideas off each other and think about things and meet with a certain kind of frequency where you're sort of pretty absorbed in the minutia of it all. Because you're really checking out hypothetical situations or settings. And so it's not something that's conducive to, to this kind of setting, um.
You're sitting across the table from each other brainstorming and just trying.
You need to draw it out and then, and then see what, what gels and then, um, reflect on it a little bit and then do it again fairly quickly. So it's a sort of a visioning process more than, um, than anything else. So it does lend itself to a working group setting. And then we would expect that working group to meet pretty intensively, but over a brief period of time.
How many people were you, um, picking up?
Um, three.
Three or four.
Three or four. Yeah, much more than that. It's us, them and the planning commissioner.
Well, yeah, we saw, we can't have four, right?
Uh, I don't.
Well, you know, I don't have a problem warning it. And so, you know, whoever shows, we could just set the time and whoever comes, comes to.
No one's making any decision. I mean, there's two things that are key here. We're perfectly able to warn it, but it's also, nothing is gonna get decided in the working group that's not brought back here. So there's no decision-making effectively going on. And that's, that's the other vital aspect of what constitutes a public meeting.
So you're thinking of like maybe three meetings and, within a two-week period or something like that?
Um, if we could organize, if we could pull that off, yeah.
I mean, I know you looked at the schedule and it's November fourteenth and that was actually one that was like, hmm, can we do it?
Right, where we would be.
I think that it can, I think that in terms of November fourteenth, there can certainly be a lot more to the chapter. So there's existing land use and then there's the future land use piece. I think the chapter can at least be half done. We can have policies to some extent.
Yeah.
But we'd also talked about that.
Yeah, we're pretty, like, we're looking at that. That's pretty ambitious, but I think it would be good to be ambitious.
Well, it's gonna have to get done.
Exactly.
You know, so there's not a lot of.
Right.
Uh, room to move there.
Right.
Timbly?
And just in terms of one more layer of information about the methodology, I guess at this point, what we're presenting is, is pretty basic. The major impetus of our work or the major focus so far has been to actually blend things together and actually reduce the number of categories and sort of effectively make the map less busy.
Yeah.
Um, and the final map is likely to have a more basic, like, you know, bottom layer.
Mm-hmm.
And to make it even more sort of conceptual and basic as a map. The only other thing that would cut against that to some extent is perhaps the use of some symbols to identify, um, kind of subcategories. So s- some of those symbols that we've identified would include doing things like identifying gate, using a little gate symbol to symbolize, to, to acknowledge that gateway function of E- Exit one and Exit two and Exit three. And, you know, Route nine, further west, I guess. Um, those kinds of, you know, introducing some minimal symbol structures to give a slightly more nuanced picture. The other category that we've looked at there is, um, for the resource constraint. It's a very, it's a very important category, but it's a very complex category. So there are some things that we're interested in protecting or preserving. That might be the view shared or something similar. So that could be symbolized by binoculars. There are other things that, um, that we're concerned about from a, from a development standpoint, like steep slopes. Some interesting symbols come to mind there, but I'm not gonna say them. So, um, um, so there's kind of, we could further refine what you understand from looking at the map by using a combination of colors and symbols, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at.
So that, that would go in the town plan, a, a, a map with different symbols and ideally that would be. So I'm, I'm sitting here looking at all of the, trying to do something for signage and, I mean, this is, this is hard to read. I mean, this is like, it's.
The town plan or you're looking?
What are you reading?
Well, okay, so I'm.
The sign ordinances?
Just zoning, um, just, just trying to figure out, uh, i- if, let's say that I wanna develop a piece of land. I wanna build a house, move my business here, or whatever it is. Um, what I'm taking from your making a map is that you're trying to make this easier for people to be able to sort of narrow down what the uses of zoning is?
It's gonna guide zoning?
Yeah, I think, I, yeah. I, what I'd say is in a, in a, in a community where there's substantial development and it's proceeding at a fairly noticeable pace, the future land use map summarizes the community's expectations about what they envisioned the future for their community and the landscape to look like in ten to twenty years' time.
Mm-hmm.
But they're also seeing pretty considerable progress towards that or, or in conflict with that every year as they see development projects, including subd- residential subdivisions come into being. So they get to check their future land use expectations and hopes against actual reality because it's unfolding at a, an observable pace. We don't have development happening at an observable pace and, um, we don't have a very clearly articulated expectation about what the future landscape should be.
So.
So it would guide a potential resident or business develop, you know, somebody who's coming to, thinking of locating a business here. But I think the actual zoning map and the actual zoning elements would be a better guide in a immediate, am I gonna buy, you know?
Yeah, am I gonna build something tomorrow?
Right, but, you know, referencing this as well gives you an indication of whether you're on the edge of something that, or, or not, or whether you wanna be on that edge or, you know, what the implications of being in a particular district might be.
So growth area, um, is, i- that's the only place that, that is envisioned for growth? I mean, I know it's sort of abstract right now, but on, you know, it says growth area. And when I look at this and I just understanding what the way of Brattleboro is now, it doesn't really seem like there's a lot of opportunity for growth. It seems more like infill. Um, versus like a place like South Street, like right in the middle where there's nothing, um, planned on. And I'm not saying, you know what I mean? I'm just, I'm just trying to.
I don't think, it, it wasn't my intent to have it be the only area for growth, but I think that if we want to be a compact community like we are, we really want, you know, infill, you know, growth, infill, whatever word you wanna use. We want it there first.
Yeah.
You know, if we have a new store coming in, we'd rather it be on Canal Street or Putney Road rather than out on Route nine.
Okay.
Um, because we've got the infrastructure there and we've got the.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would argue that the intensity of the development that we have within the so-called Brattleboro Beltway is not so, is not so intense that it couldn't do with, with more.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there are definitely challenges and, you know, many people prefer a green field site to develop and all those kinds of things. But I think that the, um, communication that we've had with the broader community is a visceral and strong uh, reaction against, um, what would be described as a sprawl.
Sprawl.
Yeah.
And, and that in combination with some, uh, limits to the infrastructure and limits to, um, development caused by, um, slope and other constraints further reinforces that, 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 that position. So, but to, to add on to what Sue's saying, sure, if we manage to fill in everything inside ninety-one and we're looking for a new, you know, then sure, I think, and I think the community would be ready to have that conversation.
And I'm not sure that even growth boundary or whatever, you know, is the right term. And I'm kind of troubled by it in that there was, the state has had different iterations of a
Yeah.
growth centers program. And so in the existing town plan, there is a growth area that was designated, that was wider than the Beltway.
Yeah.
Um, that the program has since been revised and we're not really in it. And so it's a bit confusing. It was my intent, I guess, for me, it was, and a lot of the outreach that we got, it was, let's keep it compact. Let's direct the development east of ninety-one. And so it was a way to express that.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I, it makes sense. And, you know, when you look at it, all the conversations that we've been having and all of the these areas around town are nicely spaced apart. Um, and, you know, like in any, in any, when you look at a city and you, from, from a planner's point of view, this, this is pretty ideal, you know, the distance between all of these little spots. Um, maybe it's just coincidence. Maybe, maybe somebody knew what they were doing around here.
Uh, no.
No, I mean, but it, it, it really, it's, it seems to work.
There's only one way north and, or, you know, and the traffic's all backed up on Route five.
Monday afternoon, it didn't feel so well planned out.
Yeah, no, that's for sure. Couldn't get anywhere without waiting in a line.
A lot worse off, that's for sure.
All right. So, so to go back to the working group, are we hearing that Timbly wants to go in the working group? I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, so, anybody else?
I'll do it. I got time.
I was gonna say, we're looking for three to four volunteers and there's only four of us to pick from, so.
Well, we can just.
We can put out the word. I mean, I think.
We'll put out the word to everybody.
Yeah.
What, what, I mean, how much time are we, are we looking to dedicate to this?
Um.
How did you word the task?
Just before, you mean? Do you wanna rewind my brain?
In one sentence, how are you describing the task that this work committee is charged with?
To review the map and develop the map and the, and the description of the map for future land use.
Like the best?
Yeah.
The dis.
The description of, the description of the map as part of the future land use section of the land use chapter of the town plan.
That's a, that's a rod blah blah.
Future land use mapping designations.
Right.
I'm curious.
Where are the kinks at yet?
No.
Okay.
I'm curious what your reaction is to this, especially you, Gary.
Um, I'm not positive that I understand it, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, okay.
I, uh, um, the thing that I, I guess where I'm getting a little hung up on it is, um, it seems like what it's gonna do is sort of demarcate the future zoning to some extent. And, uh, it seems like the next cut and the next cut and the next cut, like say what the working group is gonna do, is gonna kind of refine that, right? I mean, in a way. So that if you're looking at, okay, what about here? What about that there? What, what, what would keep that in there and what would put that out of there? Is that sort of? I, I mean, you're, I, I feel like it sort of strains your, uh, I guess the, I guess what it, it seems like it starts to, um, erase, starts to weed out uses.
Filter the use.
That aren't part of these, uh, aren't what you would describe by these, um, uh, initials, you know? In a sense. And I don't know if that's the intent or if the intent is, so what, I mean, if it's, if it's not, if it's leading to an ordinance, you know, if it's leading to zoning or refining the zoning or whatever, redoing the zoning.
Providing guidance for the, for the new draft of the zoning and subdivision regulations.
Right, right. And if that means, you know, and what, what you've been talking about right along is to have, you know, fewer, fewer distinct districts, you know, fewer districts, um, and, and more, um, a, a simpler zoning map.
Yeah, and perhaps more clarity about, um, the purpose of those zoning districts and how they, how they mesh together and what makes them distinctive. So some of the, and I hope this is helpful, if you stop me straight away, cause if it's not helpful. In our working out, how to do the map and how to provide these descriptions for these blended land use designation, you know, these, these land use designations are really blended zoning districts right now in particular, right? So some of them have got obviously a pretty good fit with the existing zoning district, some of them not so much, right? And so we've introduced some concepts that are a little bit new, uh, neighborhood centers and resource constraint being the two obvious new additions.
Yeah.
And what we try to do is think of, what are the uses that are compatible with the, you know, what, what, what categories can we come up with for land use? And what are the, um, compatible kinds of uses that would fit into that? And what are the real pressures or things that you need to mitigate against, um, in terms of incompatibility? So one of the kind of realizations that we've had pretty recently, throwing this around in the office a lot and even talking here, is that with the transition in, in, with the history of industrial development and its activity in Brattleboro, there's not a lot of bad associations with the industry aside from traffic congestion and truck, and heavy truck traffic. So the, the things that fifty years ago, from a zoning standpoint, you did associate with heavy industry with things such as noise and smell and, and particular fallout, as well as things like shift, you know, traffic jams associated with the, with the end of a shift and, and truck traffic and train noise and those kinds of things. Really, in terms of modern industry, there isn't, there are controls in place and there are techniques in place now that means that there is. are techniques in place now that means that there isn't an issue with odor and those kinds of things, and noise in particular. So it's, so what's the difference between Hannaford's Plaza and, uh, which generates a lot of traffic and, and some noise and, and some pollution associated with that and then puts a demand on infrastructure in that location? And say, an industrial estate of the same, of the same size, there's practically no difference at all in, in a sort of the impact kind of point of view. So what we've tried to do is think about the intensity question. So it's the intensity of activity that we're trying to address as much as anything else. And that's, that's kind of one of the guiding, um, guiding ideas behind the, the land use designation categories and the descriptions. And so we want things that are sympathetic to the landscape and sympathetic to, in particular to natural attributes that we cannot change or don't want to change and sometimes we want to protect. And then, um, it's the intensity of development around those things that becomes a key question. And then it's, and then it's capturing and preserving, um, certain built landscapes like the downtown and protecting that from, from, from things such as heavy traffic where we possibly can manage it. But then allowing space in other parts of town for low-density commercial industrial development that is potentially gonna generate lots of vehicle traffic and, and be trip generators of workers, customers and, and deliveries. And so there's those kinds.
In this case, then that would be the growth area, for instance.
Well, even within the growth area, what you're really seeing is a sort of a, you know, a separation out of, of, of zones or, or districts, if you like. So, the, the industrial to the north and to the south, um, are expressly intended to, to do that. And then the designation of a neighborhood center on the southern section of Putney Road is, is a way of identifying a set of compatible uses there. It's more, more intensive use of the land, um, more likely to be, you know, more intensively developed. Um, and then that coincides with the area on Canal Street, just north of exit one. And then, of course, there's the downtown, um, and then two further neighborhood centers further out on Route nine for the, so, so what we're trying to do is get at, you know, intensity questions to some extent and making sure that the uses within those zones or areas are compatible with each other.
Is, is part of the idea also that all of these, I keep saying nodes, and maybe that's.
You're really onto nodes, yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, the idea is that these places are, these are the places people go and park and then they, in theory, would walk around these places.
Sure.
So the, the, there's the density there and then it's.
They support the needs of the surrounding neighborhoods.
Right.
And that's what it says, actually, and your description is really good, actually.
Right. So we're, we're, we're trying to assign uses that take advantage of the existing infrastructure. So, again, to go back to the industrial category, they're at exit three and exit one, right? So what we're trying to do is push off the downside of, of large-scale commercial and industrial development to those districts that have good access to ninety-one. And it's not gonna interfere with the quality of life and the experience of Brattleboro and other parts of the community. Um, and then, as you get further away from the existing road network even, we're talking about reducing the dense, the, the intensity of use of the land, um, from the standpoint of, um, residential development or commercial development. Um, and so when you're looking at that right hand, at the left-hand section of the map, that top left-hand corner, for instance, the rural constraint, look at that, resource constraint.
Resource constraint.
Um, that, that's what, that's, that's what that is symbolizing, you know, that's what that is expressing.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
So, so I guess the, um, the couple of questions that I have are, so, um, the, the next, the, the meetings that deal with the working group. So, um, here's an example of something I would bring up, or here is something I would bring up, which is the census, um, you know, the, the, whatever you call it, where you can get money for developing in that area.
New market tax credits?
New market tax credits. So those, those really don't, uh, the growth area here, um, is, is outside of that area for the most part. Like exit one is not in there.
So that would be something that the working group would probably look at.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's a good.
Yeah.
That's a good point to bring up.
You raise a good observation. You raise a good observation, yeah, exactly. So that's exactly the kind of refinement that we'd be looking at.
So then what would be, and I'm not asking you for what it would be, actually, but what's, what sort of refinement would you make in that case?
Well, I think we want to.
Change the boundary?
We would, we'd move the line. And we, we'd probably want to rename it something apart from growth area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not.
Well, I think it's, I think it's everything. So, I see in a working group, we'd wanna look at the names. We'd wanna look at kind of where we've designated it, like where I've shown the traditional neighborhoods.
Uh huh.
What does that mean to me? Is that, is that how you see that area? Is, have we been too liberal in defining it? And then, from there, I mean, the traditional neighborhoods that we talked about earlier have a mix of uses. You can.
Right.
Go up and down Canal Street.
Sure.
And there's all sorts of residential. We're saying that's traditional to the type of development that happened and the way it happened. So what is then the intensity of the commercial use that we want to allow or the intensity of light industrial?
Uh huh.
That's acceptable for a traditional neighborhood? And we would define that in the description. We wouldn't get so nitpicky on, you can have a gas station but not a drive-through or it.
Right.
This is again, it's gonna be general.
Unless you want to know drive-throughs. It's just a general to set kind of the, how we want the town to develop and.
So, it's after a few meetings and, you know, the working group goes through those situations and I, and I can see where it would take some time and, and be very good to identify those sorts of things. Uh, so then that's done and, and, you know, after we meet and we talk about it, we, we approve it or change it or whatever.
Yep.
Then, the way that looks then is gonna go into the town plan.
Yeah.
Yep.
Jeff would create a map and it would.
Okay.
Right.
And then, uh, the next planning commission, let's say, um, when it's time to take up the rewrite of the zoning ordinance.
Yep.
That would be the ready reference.
That would be the, so it's one of the starting points that they would, they would go to, to start their work from.
And say, for instance, this zoning district, taking this sort of, uh, general guideline into account, uh, needs to change in, in this way.
Right. Or this is how we envisage this landscape being developed in the long term. Let's frame the zoning language and define the zoning district in a way that.
Makes progress.
Makes progress towards that.
Okay.
So, these models already exist somewhere, I'm sure. I mean, as far as the language and, and what these uses are, you know, DPZ does this probably every day. I mean, can we look at another town plan of what, something similar to a model that, or, or do you think that's gonna limit?
Uh, there's nothing terribly breathtaking about what we're doing here technique-wise at this point. And yeah, when we get to framing the zoning language.
But like uses, what, I mean, are we creating, are we, are we asking to see what uses that exist go or which ones need to be added?
Not, not, not in that level of detail in the, in the future land use discussion. That subsequent, that subsequent work is what I'd say.
Yeah.
So, tonight, it seems like we're just trying to figure out what this process is.
Yeah, the methodology.
Going forward.
Yep.
And you want a little more input, that's what you're looking for in the working group.
Yeah.
You guys are gonna be.
I mean, this is a half an hour intro.
Well, really specifics.
Yeah, yeah.
Really specifics.
I mean, this is a half an hour intro of what we're thinking and to really work through it and.
Right.
Get something that we want to take back to the rest of the planning.
Are these meetings with you?
Yeah.
In the newly painted planning office.
Well, um, so, uh, we have three members that aren't here.
Yeah.
At least two people who are interested in joining the working group. I have pre-volunteer, uh, what's it called, remorse. You know, this is my new, uh, thing. I have to have remorse for something that I would have volunteered for.
Oh, God.
Okay.
And not do it.
I like that.
So I'm not doing that.
Is that the opposite of Catholic guilt?
No, it's not. It's.
It's a deeper version.
Deeper version.
I'm already into deep. So, so we have at least two people who are interested in joining the working group.
We'll send.
We'll let you know.
Yeah, we'll send out an email to the non, non-attenders tonight.
Okay.
And, um, call, call them, I guess, and they.
We'll also send out.
I wouldn't rule out that I wouldn't work on it.
Okay. So maybe I'll send out to find out your availability as well.
Keep us on our toes here.
So, um, okay, so we can, we can go forward that way. And then I'll have close reports.
If you need a timely response on email, have Julia call me because I'm, I'm less email accessible at the moment.
Okay.
Especially if the libraries close.
Okay. Well, I think that in the spirit of entertainment.
Aye, so move.
I'd entertain a motion, so move, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
At eight twenty-four.
We are adjourned.
Amen.
They have another thirty-five minutes of us.
I know.
Don't, don't encourage.
Thank you to the studio, to the live viewers for watching us.
Okay.